I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screens above me. Please ensure that your mobiles are switched to silent and councillors please make sure your cards are pushed into the slots in the back of the unit and you speak directly into the microphone. So we move on to the main items of business. Minutes of the last meeting have been on the table before you for the last 30 minutes. Are you content for me to sign those as a true record?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Amy, do we have any apologies for absence?
Thank you Chairman, apologies from councillor Goodridge.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None before the meeting Chairman.
Do we have any declarations of interest to be made at the meeting? No, sorry councillor, councillor Byham, sorry.
I thought I had my declaration. The second item on the agenda Kirkson is property that I pass every day, many times a day and it's within probably about 200 metres from my house, so a person interest but non prejudicial.
Thank you. Any questions from the public Amy?
Thank you Chairman, none received.
Any from members?
None received Chairman.
Jolly good. Beth, could you give us any relevant or tell us about any relevant updates to government guidance please? Jolly good, we're rattling through tonight aren't we? And the performance against government targets, you've got the, Chris has taken it, okay Chris.
Thank you Chairman. You'll see that on the agenda item seven we've got the, there are two tables within the update sheet. One shows the performance on speed which is the government target and the other shows the performance again in terms of quality which is to do with the appeals. So for the, you'll see for the targets for the majors and the non-majors we remain on target above that target and which is really positive and the, and in terms of the quality indication we remain below the 10% of appeals allowed which is also really positive. Thank you.
Thank you Chris, good news indeed. Just to note that if we decide that we need a site inspection for any of the applications this evening, these site visits will be held on Monday the 8th of October at a time to be agreed. So we move on to the first item for our consideration this evening which is item A1, planning application reference WA oblique 2018 oblique 0763, Allfold Farm Bungalow, Lockswood Road, Allfold, GU68HP and Rebecca is going to introduce the application to us, thank you.
Thank you Chairman. It's provided via a shared access point off this main road. We've got Allfold Business Centre and some residential units to the south and then this is Allfold Farm to the east which is currently under a conversion to residential units. So the shared access along the south of the site also is a public bridleway and the site falls within the countryside beyond the green belt. So just to put the site into more context, as members will see there are a number of open fields to the north of the site, we've got Allfold Farm which I've just mentioned to the east and then to the south this is the rural settlement of Allfold. So the following slide shows some photographs of the site, so members will be able to see the existing bungalow in the top left and on the top right we see, you can see the bungalow to the right hand side with the neighbouring properties of Black Barn to the left hand side of the photo. So the access point is shown on the bottom left, this is Allfold Farm which is to the east of the site and the access off Lockswood Road is shown in the bottom right photo. So permission is sought for the erection of a detached building to provide for five residential units and this would follow the demolition of the existing bungalow. The site access would remain as existing to the south of the site and there would be space provided for parking to serve the units to the north of the site. All of the units would be two beds and each would benefit from two parking spaces. There would be amenity space provided for each unit to the south and officers have recommended a condition to secure full details of the proposed curtilage. So the building would feature a crown pitched roof with a total ridge height of 6.8 metres. The front and rear of the building would be barn hiped and would feature dormer windows and this would enable accommodation to be provided within the roof space. The materials would include stained timber weatherboarding set on a brick plinth and there would be timber openings, black guttering and clay roof tiles. So as mentioned each of the units would be two beds and would benefit from the same internal layout albeit some of the layouts would be handed for the units. If I can just take this opportunity to apologise, it's come to my attention that in the agenda report the floor plans show the ground, sorry the first floor twice. So members will now see the correct ground and first floor, floor plans for each unit on the slide. So at ground floor there would be the living space and kitchen area and the bedrooms and the en suites would be provided at first floor level. So certificate of lawfulness has been previously issued in connection with a larger household extension. This hasn't been built out but it does represent an extant scheme which could be lawfully built out. So as members will see the footprint then including the extended larger household extension is shown on the block plan there on the right. So planning permission has also been previously granted for the erection of an extension to the existing bungalow which would have provided for three residential units. The approved block plan for this scheme is shown on the left hand side and members will see the current proposed block plan to the right. The two plans are shown at different scales therefore I've just outlined in red on this right hand one the approved footprint of the previous three unit scheme. So members will see how the two schemes differ in terms of location within the site and the parking would also differ. So some of the key differences between these two schemes are shown on the current slide. As members will see the material palette has altered along with the height, the footprint and the architectural detailing of the proposed buildings. So the current scheme would be approximately two metres taller and overall would be of a larger footprint, approximately 15 square metres larger. So the determining issues are shown on the slide. Officers consider that on balance the size, the height, scale, bulk and form of the proposal would not result in any additional material harm to the countryside over and above that of the extant scheme for three dwellings. The built form would be to the north of the site and it would be sufficient distance from neighbouring properties so as to not result in any residential amenity harm. The proposed parking would accord with the council's parking guidelines and the accommodation to be provided would also meet the technical space standards. Subject to recommended conditions, no concern is raised by officers with regards to ecology, drainage, highway safety or trees. And if I could just provide a verbal update, it's also come to my attention that the drawing number in recommended highways condition, condition 16 doesn't include the correct drawing number of the submitted plans. So the drawing number should reference drawing number 001 and not that shown on the agenda report. But subject to this amendment, the recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions and informatives as set out with the agenda report. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Rebecca. This application has public speaking and I would invite Alastair Denton Miller of the parish council. Good evening sir, I understand the procedure's being explained to you and you have four minutes from when you start speaking, thank you.
Thank you Mr Chairman. On behalf of Allfold Parish Council, we would ask the committee to vote to refuse this application for the following reasons. On the fallback position, it is correct that there is an extent permission for this site, however it is for three single storey units to extend the existing single storey bungalow. It does not mean that permission for five two-storey units or an extra 40% should receive a favourable consideration. The current policies and criteria must apply, this is really planning by stealth and we would ask the committee to consider the impact of the increase from a single bungalow to five two-storey dwellings rather than an increase of just two single storey dwellings. It should be noted that the neighbouring properties in Allfold Business Centre are themselves conversions of farm buildings, however in these cases they were conversions of existing agricultural buildings that had been run into dilapidation. Here there was at least an argument that the development would improve the character of the area and this cannot be said for this application for five new homes on an area currently used as agricultural land. On planning policy, under the current local plan, Allfold is required to provide a minimum of 125 units by the end of the planned period. As of Tuesday this week, when another application for 23 units was granted at appeal, we currently have 117 units with approval that are all deliverable in the short term. This leaves us with only another eight units to find over the entire length of the planned period. Allfold has extremely limited infrastructure and services and Waverley officers have previously stated that any development over and above the planned target would be unsustainable. The Allfold Neighbourhood Plan is currently at the site allocation phase and there are alternative sites that will allow us to meet and exceed our planned targets without having to shoehorn the maximum number of units into every tiny space. The Allfold Housing Needs Assessment does not show any need for this application. On design, Allfold Parish Council find the design for five units to be overly cramped. The increased mass size and scale of the proposed building over the three single storey units already permitted, which is due largely to the addition of a second story, would have an urbanising impact on the surrounding countryside which would detract from the landscape character. While the proposed dwellings are referred to as bungalows in the application, they're quite clearly two-storey buildings with roof lines significantly higher than the existing bungalow and with glazing facing the Black Barn properties at the first floor level. The current access to the other residential properties in the Allfold Business Centre area is via a single lane choke point which is also a popular public drop bridleway and an access for farm vehicles. Traffic congestion here is already proving difficult at times particularly when visitors to the Allfold veterinary surgery are reversing out of their parking spaces. There are still eight additional and as yet uncompleted dwellings in the converted stable building which will only add to this problem and it is obvious that adding another four properties can only cause further access problems. Information regarding surface water drainage is sorely lacking. The officer has not consulted the lead local flood authority even though they objected to the previous application for five dwellings and even though the proposed development is in an area that floods. This beggars belief. Foul water drainage is another major issue. This part of Allfold is subject to sewage flooding on a regular basis and the sewers are over capacity with no real mitigation measures proposed. This requires pumping by trucks in time of heavy rainfall. This proposal does not take this into account at all. There are no economic, social or environmental benefits to the village from a proposed development and it does nothing to maintain or enhance the vitality of the village. There is no pressing need for further residential development. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, councillor Dinas.
Thank you Chair. Before I start, I think we've all sent an email so some people might not have actually got on the computer earlier on which was sent, I think it was by the, Mr Rowe who's the planning solutions gentleman for this application and it says, "On the basis of the professional officer's recommendations for approval, it is likely that a refusal of the application would constitute unreasonable behaviour with an award of full costs in favour of the applicant on appeal. Consistent with the allowed appeal in relation to the adjacent conversion scheme currently under construction, refusal in this instance will inevitably mean that permission is allowed at appeal." Chair, I find these comments almost an attempt to intimidate members by sending that to them, that if we don't approve they will appeal and win and get costs from us. Tonight I will deal with this application having listened to the officer's comments, parish council's comments and my colleagues and I'll make my judgement on its merits and not by being sent an email which I feel is fairly intimidating. So I just thought I'd mention that before I go into, thank you. Okay, I'm very grateful for the parish for their views but I, page nine which is the proposed floor plans, I'm accepting that they weren't correct as such. What this clearly shows is the first floor is a complete first floor with the same space. And although the officer said that it's only a plus 15 metres increase, that's not quite the case because 15 metres is just under 50 square feet but if you added the first floor of living accommodation to that, it comes to about 1,300 extra square feet of living accommodation. So 1,300. The officer's mentioned this countryside beyond the green belt, it's outside any defined settlement area and the settlement area has not been proposed for change in part two of the local plan. Lockswood Road and part of the area is a conservation area, I won't go into those details at this present time. Page 10 does mention the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, I'm really not sure what the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan actually impacts on this application, I presume it's just been put in incorrectly. As the councillor said earlier, this is a 40% increase in units. He's raised the issue that we've now got 117 houses out of 125, we're 14 years still to go so I think it's quite a lot of building work at the moment and with no, virtually no infrastructure improvements. There's been a call for sites for the local plan for Allfold and that has identified brownfield sites which would far exceed the total anyway. Policy RE1 states intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside will be recognised and safeguarded, I think we all know that. It recognises and safeguards sites from excessive development. And policy SP1 talks about the adverse impacts of granting permission which would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies of the MP, PF as a whole. And I've looked all the way through this report and I can't see any benefits at all. What other benefits of this? There's no money, there's no contributions, I just cannot see what the benefits and then of course when you add there's 1,800 houses up the road to be built over the next few years, I think it amplifies that even more. So where will children go to school? Well nearest school is in Cranley, we know there's no train stations, the bus service, the X1 is now being cancelled and if you want to go south, so that's into Sussex because there are doctors there, they only run on a Tuesday and Thursday. Hourly service two days a week, so if you want to go to a doctor you can only go on two days a week. Councillor Denton Miller mentioned about the foul sewage. This really does cause me a lot of concern. It's mentioned about the trying to divert some surface water, that was working with Thames Water and doesn't really impact on Southern Water who are the lead authority for on this one. Now they've submitted a letter dated on the 20th of July and it states, "There is an increased risk of flooding unless required network reinforcement is provided. It will take time to design the delivery of any such reinforcement. Occupation of development is to be phased and implemented to align with the delivery of any sewage network reinforcement. It may be possible for some initial dwellings to be connected." I believe they've said this about some Lockswood applications that they're saying they can't actually occupy them at the moment. They say it could be hopefully within 24 months of commencement. Am I confident that Allfold will be high on the list of Southern Water's infrastructure programme? I'm not. June this year, Allfold suffered huge flooding and that was just following two and a half hours of floods. And I think the developers really aren't too worried about that. The design, the parish has spent some time highlighting how it conflicts with policy TD1. Page 12 of the officer's report rightly highlights the increase in mass, size and scale of the development through a second story would have a greater visual impact resulting urbanising impact on the countryside. So if you, those who've been on this site visit will see the impact on the residents of Black Barn. Now when we did the site visit, people would have noticed that the windows at the rear are quite small. That was because there was a condition that that conversion had to have that size window so they didn't overlook the bungalow. But what we're now doing is we're putting a design forward that has windows that will do the opposite and overlook the occupants of one to four Black Barn. Colleagues will also remember standing in the downstairs room of two properties and if you're standing there or you're sitting there, you will have this mass of building in front of you. Pages 15 and 16 of the report eloquently detail some very valid reasons why this should be refused. Submissions in support, the spread, bulk and scale of dwellings has been reduced, yes it's been slightly reduced but we're now going to a five two-storey buildings and as previously said this was existing buildings that were run down, this is new construction. I won't even go into the use of agricultural land, impact on conservation area, many other issues, I don't think they're the big issues tonight. I think we need to look at the history of this site. So the original extension to the bungalow was dealt with by a certificate of lawfulness by delegation, some years ago and thankfully I think the scheme of delegation changed that maybe this wouldn't have slipped through as it has. We then have an application in 2016 which is 2287 which is a demolition of the bungalow and erection of five dwellings. This was refused and the grounds are shown on page 18 of the officer's report. Then we have an application 2017 stroke 0758 which is an extension to the existing dwelling to provide the two additional dwellings. So this is the part demolition of the current bungalow and the two single storey. Now these were single storey buildings. So on that report, page 24 officer's report states, when talking about five dwellings, would cause a visually urbanising residential development given the relative traditional appearance of the area. The scheme was considered to result in an encroachment into an area of undeveloped land at the southern end of the site which in combination with the number of dwellings and their size, scale and design would result in an urbanising impact. So the application for three-storey bungalows was approved because the grounds of, well I've just read out, were overcome. And the planning officer concluded that the three bungalows, single storey, would be an acceptable size, height, scale and bulk form. And states in the report that the changes compared to the previously refused scheme, well I've just mentioned, there would be no material harm to neighbouring residential amenity or to the ecology. I think it's really important to see that history and how they've got the approval for the three saying it's much smaller, it's a single story and before they even do that they're putting back in what they put in for previously which was refused. The reasons, those reasons for refusal aren't mine, they came from the officer's report. And there's nothing in this latest application which fundamentally changes that. There can be some tweaks in the application but those fundamental issues have not changed. From number one to four, Black Barn, you will see a blanket of a two-storey accommodation. From end to end, it is 115 feet long. This is not acceptable and quite frankly is insulting to the residents who live there.
Councillor Dinas, could you sum up now, you've had a very long time and I'm sure others would like to add.
I have indeed, if you would like me to let other people, I have a couple of other application comments which are the council's comments on this site which I think are very relevant but I'm happy to come back to them if other colleagues.
I think that would be good, yes. Let's see if anybody else would like to speak first. No, it looks like you've got the floor sir. Councillor Towne then, sorry.
Thank you Chairman. I must admit I'm a bit confused by this application and the recommendation for approval because I had thought that with the adopted local plan that we could now protect our countryside beyond the green belt and this was one of the reasons for me particularly despite reservations that we accepted or I accepted our local plan. I believe that residents also want us to protect our countryside beyond the green belt and to be able to fend off speculative development which I think this is speculative development. We are here facing the recommendation for a larger isolated development in the countryside beyond the settlement boundary that as councillor Dinas said was previously refused in January, only as recently as January 2017. And now we have policies to protect RE1, the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside which we should use. I also, councillor Dinas did mention about the conservation area and I looked through the conservation area appraisal and there is a key vista across Jubilee Pond which I am sure that this building as much as it's now jutting out onto this site will actually affect. It was highlighted as being significant to the character of the village. If it is significant as was stated in that appraisal, isn't it worth protecting? I do not feel that the impact on the conservation area has been fully assessed and for its harm. Whilst there is considerable tree cover on the side of the pond, that is only there for half of the year, the other half of the year you will see the bulk and scale and mass of this two-storey building. It is only one foot lower than your average two-storey UK house, it is a considerable size. It will have a negative impact on the view from the Lockswood Road, I am sure and therefore I think it is contrary to policy HA1 as well. Whilst the appeal decision is noted on page 22 about justifying the isolated development in the countryside as councillor Dinas mentioned about the barns that were converted, I don't think we can second guess that the inspector would use that for the demolition of a property. This was the reuse of an existing property which had gone into a dilapidated state. This is completely different to what we're looking at tonight which is actually the knocking down of a bungalow and replacing it with five two-storey homes. I'm also confused as well about the Southern Water letter, I'm just going to open it up on my iPad here, which actually says that this will increase the risk of flooding unless required network reinforcement is provided and then they go on to say that it's going to be part funded through the new infrastructure charge which I'm presuming there it's referring to SIL. However, I can't see any SIL here, I don't think we've yet adopted SIL, so how is this actually going to be funded? I am aware, I've been to the flood forum meetings, I'm aware of considerable concern about flooding. We're talking about foul water flooding here of existing residents. They, Southern Water are confirming that this is an issue and needs to be addressed through part funding of basically SIL which doesn't seem to exist. That does concern me hugely. At the moment as well, I think that we are looking at, as I said, a new development which is much bigger than what's been approved, there's already been three bungalows approved on this site and I think that this is speculative development which is going to cause damage to the neighbouring amenity of the people living in Black Barn. So at this moment in time, I do not think that I could approve this, support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak before the, councillor Henry?
Thank you Chairman. I was very grateful to have the opportunity of going on the site visit earlier in the week, thank you very much for that. As a councillor from a rural village, I well understand the concerns of the local people about this and I do believe we as elected members should do all in our power to ensure that we get the right type of development in the right places for our people and I feel very strongly about that. Having said that, Allfold Rural Centre, I think to my mind has to an extent been very creative in fashioning, fashioning a serviceable accommodation both in the business and the domestic side. However, I do strongly feel that this application is not, certainly not in that category and we should be here this evening. And we should be here this evening to make sure that we find the right accommodation in the right areas, the right situation, the right type of build. To my mind, the scale, mass and the enableness of it, and the very close proximity to the people of Black Barn is very unable, and I think these things are very much out of character. For years, Allfeld, it's almost twenty years, according to the reports, have been working with their initiative and together with their neighbourhood plan to create something that will really work for their community. They're getting very close to it, like most of us villagers, people, but they're not far enough forward for it to have an impact. Nevertheless, people within the community have been working for two decades to come to some agreement amongst themselves with regard to design, location and the type of housing that they want for their people. And I don't think we should let things like that slip by unnoticed. More recently, we've had the local plan, and that's brought in in policies, and I think we should stick by those very securely. Something else that's come to my attention, and it's probably not something we can deal with in the meeting tonight, but the situation of the development and how it relates to the application itself. Here we're looking at a new build within the countryside, and yet, when it comes to things like amenity space, garden and so forth, this is dealt with as a condition. I find this rather alien. I know it's something we deal with, but it's very important, I think, to get that right at the first stage, rather than have it as a tack-on extra. So in all, my thoughts are this is inappropriate development within the countryside. Others have said other things, but I hope that this is useful to the members. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo your concerns about the detail on the drawings. I was quite concerned that on the northern boundary, there was that rather large ditch, which if this site plan is to be believed, is going to push the car parking back by about another three metres, which then moves the building back by three metres, and suddenly that twenty-three metres distance to the rear boundary doesn't ring true. councillor Seaborn.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I just struggle with this, as councillor Dinas has already pointed out. On page eighteen, we have a list of reasons for a previous refusal for five properties, and okay, slightly different properties, but we have a list of refusals, and it's been pointed out that nothing significantly has changed. And I think a committee like this is bound to be consistent, so if I don't have an argument to be different to what we've already agreed in previous application, I struggle. Even if we were to accept this, the points that you've just made about detail would make me, would put me in a position where I would struggle to approve this. Curtelages, I feel, shouldn't be a condition, they should be there for us to see what is on offer. Likewise, the drainage ditch, absolutely clear, it's sitting there, it's not, doesn't show up on the plans, what impacts are they going to have? And if we were minded to approve this, a proper screening scheme so that the two rows of properties are not looking, staring at each other, would need to be clear. And I think that should be clear to us as a deciding body, given that we've called this in, rather than an officer decision. So I'm afraid I'm really struggling with this one at the moment. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to? councillor Varshevsky.
Thank you, chairman. Like my fellow councillors, I find it difficult to understand this application because it does seem to have many facets to it, all of which are very confusing. But I would like to echo the comments that councillor Dinas started off with, because I too saw the email. But I take very little notice of that sort of nonsense, and like you, I make my decisions on the basis of what happens in this chamber this evening. It's already been mentioned, but where I really struggle with this is there's extant permission there for an application that in principle has been accepted. It's already been mentioned, and I feel very passionate about this, because like many people in this council, really fought hard and strong to have a sound, robust local plan. And this application goes against that by allowing this development to be recommended for approval. So I think we need to be very careful on the message that we're sending out there. Either we have policies and a local plan that is robust and stand and sound and credible, which I believe we do, this would suggest that it could be tinkered with. So I think we should do everything to protect the policies we have, I think this goes outside of this room. I do struggle how officers came to the recommendation in the report, given the inspector's comments. So with respect to the officer's report, I think it's a very comprehensive and a good one, and although I didn't go on the site visit, as a former ward member for this area, I know the site very well, on the information that I had before me and in honouring our local plan, I'm afraid I couldn't support the officer's recommendation on this occasion. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Dinas, would you like to come back and sum up?
I just have a couple of points. I've just mentioned yet another application that was submitted on this same site back in 2017, which was for the demolition of the existing building and for three buildings. It was an invalid application, but when you read their heritage statement, this is the applicant's, it actually quotes Rebecca on an email, it copies an email, and it reads, so this is from Rebecca Clark to the applicant, "I would advise that prior to it coming to my attention, that the application was invalid. I had reviewed the application with the area team leader. Unfortunately, officers would not have been able to support the application owing to the impact on the countryside beyond the green belt, its spread, bulk and size of proposed buildings, and the overall impact on the character and visual amenities of the area. In the instance that the application is resubmitted, it is therefore likely that the officers would recommend refusal." And I think that's a really good assessment, it's a shame the same assessment wasn't put for a larger application. I will skip all the other points other than flooding, because I think there's a couple of points that haven't been identified. If you look at reading their strategy that the applicants have put in, it's dated October 2015, so it's three years old. It refers to eleven new residential units, so it's not even specific for this application. And it's full of assumptions, it is likely we would expect. So they've put an, you know, they haven't even done an up-to-date application. It talks about SUDs. Well, I've seen nothing in the report which talks about SUDs, because as we know, sewage, Southern Water would have to, well, they're not adoptable by Southern Water. So it is just so nebulous what the flooding, what the sewage and everything else in. And it talks about, it's critical, Southern Water say, it's critical the effectiveness of these systems is maintained in perpetuity. Good management will avoid flooding from the proposed water system. Well, they haven't even put a current document up to say exactly what they're going to do. And like I say, in June, we were flooded out and people had right to their homes, cars were underwater. My view is, they've got extant permission for three bungalows, fine. They're single-story, but let's not compound it by making it worse. I'll leave it at there, chair, because I think I've had more than my fair share of time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. So members, with your permission, we'll move to the recommendation, which is that subject to conditions one to eighteen, and with the proviso about the amended drawing number we heard earlier, and informatives one to thirteen, permission be granted. All those in favour?
None, chairman.
All those against?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. Members, could I have a proposal for an alternative recommendation? councillor Dinas. Thank you. councillor Townsend would second, and would you like to give us some grounds then, please?
Well, indeed, some of the actions sections may have been changed, so please accept my apologies. So the proposals, as a result of the number of dwellings, scale, layout, bulk and overdevelopment and urbanising impact, would result in material visual harm to the rural character of the area and to the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside beyond the green belt. The proposal will fail to take the opportunities available for improving the character and quality of the area and the way it functions. The proposal is therefore contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the local plan 2002, you have to change that bit, policies RE1, ST1, TD1 of the local plan 2002, and it was the paragraph seventeen, fifty-eight and sixty-four of the MPPF 2012. So that would have to be, that would have to be updated. The second ground, by virtue of its scale, size, height, bulk and proximity to the neighbouring properties, would have a detrimental, overbearing impact on the amenities of the occupiers of numbers one to four, Black Barn, both internally and externally. The proposal would therefore be contrary to policy D1 of the local plan 2012 and paragraph 109 of the MPPF. And the third ground, insufficient information has been submitted to demonstrate that a feasible drainage strategy could be implemented in connection with the proposed development, and as such, the proposal could result in an unacceptable increase in surface water runoff that could increase flood risk elsewhere, contrary to policy D1 of the Waverley Barrow Local Plan 2002 and paragraph 103 of the MPPF 2012. And I'm sure someone might mention the conservation area as well.
Thank you. Would anybody like to add to those? councillor Townsend.
I would like to add the impact on the conservation area as well, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers, any comments before I move to the revised recommendation?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, members, just to pick up on a couple of points. If I firstly talk about the impact on neighbours, I'll just pop the proposed block plan up. Obviously, I've highlighted that it would be twenty-three metres to the shared boundary, and obviously a greater distance then to the rear elevation of Black Barn properties. I would just like to set out that obviously we have a residential extensions SPD document, that does set out a distance of twenty-one metres between rear elevations of properties so as to avoid any impact to neighbours. So this would in fact be in excess of that separation distance. So therefore, it's actually accorded with what our residential SPD is saying. So I would just caution members that, you know, we might not be able to sustain that. Obviously, I appreciate the previous application was refused on impact to neighbouring amenity. What I would say is that previous scheme involved two buildings, and they were sort of running north to south, and the second building was located in this area. So it was far closer to the neighbouring properties, and officers felt at that time that there would be an unacceptable impact, hence the reason for, you know, refusal on grounds of residential amenity. So I'd just like to point that out to members, and obviously it's for members to make the decision as to whether or not they would like to proceed with a reason for refusal on overbearing impact and general impact to residential amenity. Secondly, the previous refusal didn't include a reason for refusal on grounds of the conservation area. Again, no objection has been raised previously by the council's heritage officer in terms of the impact to the setting and character of the conservation area. So that's just something I'd like to point out to members. Again, I appreciate it's ultimately your decision as to whether or not you want to proceed with a condition on that ground. In terms of drainage, obviously, you know, as members will see, we have consulted relevant statutory consultees. Appreciate the comments from Southern Water have been raised a couple of times. They haven't raised an objection, obviously they've set out recommended conditions. So officers feel that there wouldn't be an objection being raised, and that it would be acceptable. Surface water and drainage could be controlled by means of a planning condition, and that has been recommended. So I'd just like to point those things out. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Dinas.
Just a very quick point, it's just for clarity, I don't think in law, water companies can say, "We object." I don't think they're allowed to in law to actually use that terminology. They can say they have concerns. I'm pretty sure they can actually say they object, full stop. But irrespective, the three, the conditions, I would still support and still would like to be put as conditions.
councillor Townsend, as a second, do you support councillor Dinas? So members, the revised recommendation is proposed by councillor Dinas and seconded by councillor Townsend, that for the reasons that they have specified, that permission be refused. All those in favour, please?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. So that application is refused. Now we move on to item A2, which is application reference WA2018/1056, Kirkstone, Barton Road, Bramley, GU50EA, and Nicola is going to present this application to us. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of two semi-detached dwellings on the plot of an existing single dwelling located in the western side of Barton Road and Bramley. There is one update to the report which has been circulated. Within the design and impact on visual amenity section on page fifty-one of the agenda report, the distance to the southern boundary is stated as a minimum of naught point seven metres extending to naught point nine seven five metres. This is incorrect and should read a minimum of one point zero five metres extending to one point one five metres at the front. The recommendation remains as stated on page fifty-five of the agenda report. The first slide shows the location plan. The application site is outlined in red. This plan shows the range of scale of dwellings and plot sizes within the locality. The site is located south of St Helia's, the nearest residential neighbour, the closest structure being the attached, the garage which is attached to that dwelling. To the rear of the site are the dwellings along Fisher Row Close, the nearest the application being number one. To the south of the site is a grassed area of highway verge. This slide shows an aerial photograph of the site, showing the plot as a whole with the wide flat-roof dormer in the rear elevation of the existing dwelling. It also gives a better view of number one Fisher Row to the rear. The plan shows the aerial image of St Helia to the north, showing its stepped form and the single garage at the south. This site, this slide, sorry, shows the block plan indicating the proposed semi-detached pair of houses. The combined width of the pair of dwellings would be fifteen metres with a depth of seven point nine metres. The height to eaves is four point nine metres and height to ridge of eight metres, and the roof form is hip. The separation distance from the flank wall, from the northern side wall, to the boundary of St Helia to the north is a minimum of one point zero five metres, the separation to the southern elevation of the St Helia's single garage being two point five metres. The amenity space to the rear for the northern property has an average depth of seven point six, measured across the middle, and an area of seventy-seven metres squared. For the southern property, the amenity space to the rear, including the patio and side return, is sixty-four point five metres squared, and it has an average depth of seven metres. And my reference to seventy-seven metres for the northern property also included the patio and side return. Two parking spaces are provided for each dwelling, which is point five spaces fewer than the standard of two point five spaces required for a three-bedroom house. So overall, the number of spaces is one fewer. Each of the spaces, when measured from the front elevation of the proposed dwellings, achieves the council's size standards for car parking spaces, and County Highways has made no objection to proposals. This slide presents the proposed elevations. It shows clearly the hip roof form of the proposed dwellings. This slide shows proposed floor plans of the ground floor and the first floor. The gross internal floor area exceeds the guidelines for a two-story, three-bedroom dwelling. dwelling proposed for five people. Whilst bedroom three is marginally smaller than the guidelines set out within nationally described space standards for a single bedroom, it is considered that this would not provide such a poor quality of accommodation to warrant refusal on these spaces. The following plan illustrates the elevations in three D, three D format from a variety of views. The left-hand side shows the front elevation onto Barton Road and the side elevation facing St Helia. The first floor side window would be to a bathroom and would be obscurely glazed. The right-hand side shows the rear elevation and the side elevation facing the junction which Fisher Row Close. Again, the first floor side window would be obscurely glazed. Uh, more three D elevations showing the rear elev- More illustrated elevations are showing the rear of the proposed dwellings and the further three D close-up to the front. This slide shows the proposed visibility, the visibility displays plan, uh, and illustrates the required visibility displays and as previously mentioned, county highways has raised, raised no objections to development subject to conditions. This slide shows the case officer photographs. Uh, this particular slide predominantly shows the existing dwelling, showing it's a sing, a single bungalow. Um, the final photograph shows the relationship with St Helia to the north of the site and that's on the left-hand side of the photograph. The single garage on the southern part of that property can just be seen here. This slide shows photographs to the rear of the site showing the large flat-roof dormer at the rear. This, these photographs show the highway verge to the south of the site and also the thick existing hedgerow at the rear of the site that separates the application site from number one Fisher's Row. With regard to determining issues, a matter of principle and technical opinion, the issue of parking and highway safety has been referred to already within this presentation. The other issues are discussed within the officer's report, such as biodiversity and compliance with habitat regulations. With regard to matters of judgment, these have been touched on in this presentation and are discussed in more detail within the officer's report. Therefore, subject to conditions one to eight within the agenda report, this application is recommended for approval. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Nicola. Um, public speaking, I would invite Andrew Banders to, as the supporter, to speak on behalf of the applicant. As before, you have four minutes from the time when you start speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, members. My name is Andrew Banders, I'm a planning consultant working for D and M Planning Limited based in Godalming. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my client, Mr Robinson, in support of his application at Kirkstone Barton Road for the replacement of a chalet bungalow sighted on a corner plot with a pair of semi-detached two-storey dwellings. The site is within the built-up area of Bramley washed over by the Green Belt, which is characterised by a variety of housing types and styles. The replacement semi-detached dwellings will occupy a similar footprint to the existing chalet bungalow with only a modest increase in depth and width to the existing building's footprint. Although the height of the building will change, the proposed height of the replacement dwellings will only increase by two metres over and above the height of the existing bungalow's roof. The replacement semi-detached dwellings have been designed in a traditional Surrey vernacular style, similar to other dwellings within the immediate area. The proposed rear amenity area is not too dissimilar to the amenity areas found on neighbouring plots and are in fact larger than those at Fisher Row Close and the new development at Little Sadlers in Bramley. As you will note from the submitted plans and location plan, the area is characterised by a mixture of house types, including bungalows and two-storey houses of varying architectural styles. As such, the proposed development would not appear out of place in this location. At the front of the site, two off-street car parking spaces are proposed for each dwelling. Parking at the front of properties is a common parking arrangement within Barton Road. The proposed parking spaces meet with the council's parking standards and are of the required dimensions so that a vehicle can park clear off the pavement. It is also noted that Surrey County Council have not raised any objections to a proposed from a highway safety point of view. We welcome the fact that your planning officers are supporting the scheme. The officer's report is very detailed and thorough and covers all the material planning issues pertaining to this development proposal. Although I would point out that under the heading impact on the Green Belt, the report states the site is outside any defined settlement boundary, although as noted elsewhere in the report, the site does actually fall within the rural settlement boundary of Bramley. We concur with the officer's statement that the proposal should be considered as being limited infill development on previously developed land. The proposal has been deemed by the officers not to impact on the openness of the Green Belt and in line with planning policy. The officer's report assesses the impact on neighbouring residential dwellings and concludes that the proposal is in line with the council's residential extensions SPD and would not materially impact on the amenity of neighbouring dwellings. Importantly, officers have concluded that the separation distances between the proposed dwelling and neighbouring properties is acceptable and would not result in any overlooking or be overbearing on their amenities. We do not consider the proposed to be an overdevelopment to the site. Each dwelling would provide good quality internal space as well as a usable external amenity area. In summary, it is hoped that members will concur with their officers that the proposal is not in conflict with government advice as contained in the MPPF, is in line with local plan policies TD1 of part one of the new local plan and also policies D1, D4 and RD1 of the saved two thousand and two local plan. It is considered that the proposal would not harm the character of the area or impact unduly on the amenities of neighbouring properties. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr Banders. Uh, members, before I pass it over, I think it would be worth clarifying from the officers whether or not this site is within the settlement boundary of Bramley or, or not. Officers? My learned friend next to me says yes, it is within the settlement boundary of Bramley. Thank you. Members? councillor Byam?
Thank you, uh, chairman, members. Uh, yes, I brought this, uh, called this in, um, for consideration because I do feel strongly that it is overdevelopment of a, a very, a site with a very modest bungalow on it, uh, and very little amenity space around it, uh, as can be seen on the drawing in front of you. And, and indeed, the front garden of the existing bungalow will be lost to car parking. The initial drawings that were, were actually submitted, the block plan, um, showed the, the front area in, in, in front of the existing house and therefore the proposed development of the new house, uh, new houses to be parallel and to be, to show vehicles of presumably four point eight metres long, because that is the requirement for parking standards to be within that boundary. That was clearly totally fictitious. Uh, first of all, that, that, it was parallel, uh, and it was four point five, just about four point five metres, very, very slightly, uh, a, along that line, uh, and therefore the, the vehicles would overhang the car, a, any long vehicles of the required length would hang over the edge of the car, of the adjoining pavement. And I always find it strange that we include within the red line the, the pavement. They don't own the pavement. The pavement is highway authority and, and the amenity of the adjoining neighbours, uh, who use this road, um, this pa, pavement strongly. There, there are a number of disabled people within, uh, the adjoining small estate of Fisher Row Close and others, and therefore it's, and there is no pavement on the opposite side of the road and it is an extremely dangerous side of the road to walk and therefore maintenance of that car park, as of that pavement is imperative. The, it now shows, as the drawing in front of us at the moment, um, that the four point eight metres is within the boundary. I, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain the three lower southern vehicles, if you like, are within that line, but the top one will be overhanging the pavement if that size of vehicle is used. Uh, and of course, that means that you've got to park right up to and bump into the, uh, the, the ba, the boundary of the house to actually achieve that four point eight metres depth. Um, because of the inaccuracies of the original drawings, I'm still a little doubtful as to the, the, uh, depth of space that is actually available at the, the rear of the garden. I still think it, as it stands, it's inadequate, I, but I, we haven't got access and I don't think officers have tried to measure that to find out whether it is an accurate drawing, bearing in mind the total inaccuracies of the original submitted plans. So I, I think it's, uh, overdevelopment of a, of a small plot in a prominent position, uh, with, uh, there will be problems with parking because it's clearly states that extra parking, as necessary, will park along that road. Well, it's, it's saturated most of the time anyway and therefore extra ones are going to create additional problems. So I submit it's overdevelopment and wish to, us to refuse that application. Thank you.
councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, chairman. I think I probably ought to start, given that councillor Byam declared an interest at the start, that I, I also pass this site regularly and, uh, I live about hundred and fifty metres further away from the site than councillor Byam, so I'm probably covered by the same considerations. Um, there are three things about this site that concern me, um, and the principal one is, is around, uh, traffic safety. Uh, we were shown the visibility displays and as a theoretical demonstration, which of course the highway authority is bound by, um, they are correct. However, uh, if you come out of Furs Avenue, which you can see on the left-hand side and then turn left into Barton Road, many times of the day, there are vehicles parked right up to the corner of Furs Avenue, uh, frequently vans and that regularly causes bottlenecks of vehicles waiting to get into what is actually a single lane rat-run up, up to Station Road. And so that visibility display picture is, um, it is not a true representation of what residents regularly have to put up with. Uh, this evening, when I was coming to this meeting, there were actually four cars parked outside Kirkstone and adjacent St Helia's, which is completely out of keeping what, with what has happened in that area for a long time. And, uh, it immediately detracts, takes away your attention from progress, uh, and, uh, that demonstrated what we might well be facing in the future, cars parked on the side of the road that no one ever parks their cars on. Um, there's a convention down there about parking and, uh, this evening we saw that broken. So I'm, I'm seriously concerned about the reality of road traffic safety. I understand the theory which is put in front of us, but as a, as a local resident who regularly drives past there, um, I, I would be very worried about increasing, uh, usage of vehicles having to either drive onto the highway or reverse onto the highway at, from these two new properties. Uh, up to, up to about a year ago, a solitary little old lady lived there, so there were no, no vehicular movements at all in that setting. Um, suddenly we're looking at potentially a significant amount of, uh, traffic reversing in and out of a, a site, which is, um, doesn't have great visibility when you're coming from Barton Road. So that's my principal concern. The previous application considered the neighbourhood plan and I'd just like to bring to the attention of members the status of the Bramley neighbourhood plan, since the argument was made for the previous, um, previous application. Bramley has a local plan requirement to deliver ninety buildings, ninety net, uh, new dwellings during the, uh, planned period and, uh, as of today, we're, um, in either built or with planning permission, we have eighty-seven. Uh, so there is no great need for additional housing. However, the, the neighbourhood plan is progressing and hopefully that will go to referendum sometime in the next twelve months and it's, um, very much focused on brownfield sites and based on a housing needs survey, we're looking at affordable entry-level housing or housing that is appropriate for downsizing. Now, the property that's there at the moment is actually a very suitable property for downsizing, although it's not particularly, it's not a work of great artistic beauty, it is, uh, a very suitable property for downsizing and the, as I said, uh, an old lady lived there until her, um, removal to a, a care home and, uh, that, that's, the existing building is suitable for that. The new buildings won't particularly feel, uh, fall in either of the categories that Bramley would be looking for to satisfy its neighbourhood plan desires. So there's that aspect. And the third aspect is the, uh, uh, reduction in the visual amenity. And, um, these, these houses are not particularly, um, unsightly, but they are not in the character of what exists in Barton Road, which is currently principally, uh, individual buildings. There are some terrace cottages towards the Station Road end which are quite, have character, but they, they would be nothing like the two new buildings which, uh, will, will have a, will change the character. If they were rotated through ninety degrees and compared with what's in Fisher Row Close, then I, I'd have no objection at all. But in, in terms of facing onto Barton Road, we'd be changing the street scene quite significantly and in my view, um, the visual amenity would be reduced. Uh, beyond that, it's actually, uh, you know, the, the internal layout I find reasonably acceptable, um, the space considerations don't worry me unduly. I think it's road traffic safety, the fact that Bramley doesn't actually need what's being proposed and the, uh, reduction in the quality of visual amenity in Barton Road are the three aspects that do concern me. So I'm, I'm, I'm at the moment struggling to, to accept this or accept the officer's recommendation, but I'd be interested to hear what colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Deenis?
Thank you. Just a couple of small points. Can we go to the block plan, please? Um, what cons, what concerns me looking at this, with, sorry, highways, um, normally have a condition or, or state that the, the access should be that they can, um, exit whilst in forward gear, I think is the word in A U's. I'm not sure how you would do that, looking at that, um, block plan. Um, you certainly, once you've gone in, um, front first, you would have to go out backwards and that does cause a danger. So that, that was, that, that'd be my first concern. Um, and then when you look at, on our members pages forty-four, which is the existing elevations, again, I'm not sure if we can put those, those up. That's, that, that, but, and also say, if, if, if members look at page forty-four, it shows it as well. I mean, this to me is, you know, it's a, a small bungalow. Um, and then when you look at page forty-six, which is the proposed elevations, it's just a huge increase of mass, in my view. Um, and I don't know whether we have, um, yeah, thank you, um, the increase in floor space. Um, if I've missed it, my apologies, but what did we have as floor space for the original bungalow and then the floor space for the two-storey for both buildings? My view would be, and I haven't worked it out, it's a massive, massive increase. So I would echo my colleagues, uh, I think this is a real overdevelopment in a very small space. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? councillor Townsend?
Thank you, chair. Um, yet again, another loss of, of a bungalow within Waverley, which are suitable for people wanting to, to downsize. Um, I think councillor, um, uh, Seaborn was being fairly kind when he said that these properties were, um, were, well, I can't remember the term he used, but, but not awful or something. I find them slightly banal myself and they're unexceptional and uninspiring. Um, the flatted, that little floating porch, I think I'd happily chuck into room one oh one actually, but, um, I also find the design of the houses with the cars going right up to that front window, I think that, you know, the MPPF is looking at houses being of better design and, you know, having houses literally outside your front window, I don't think is a good design and also I don't think it's a healthy design for people to live in, um, at all. Um, I, I have driven, um, around Fisher Row Close there and, uh, currently it is, has got, you know, a nice green area beside it going into Fisher Row Close on both sides. And actually, when you look at the bungalow from the side, the existing bungalow, you can actually see the woodland behind as well. It's quite an attractive entrance to Fisher Row Close and this is going to, as has been said before, create a much, much bigger building. And I do think that, um, it will dwarf the neighbouring building of St Helia's and also will overlook the number one, um, of Fisher Row Close as well. And it completely changes the character of this area. Um, I don't think sufficient parking or long enough parking, as councillor, um, Byam has said, has been provided and because of the parking already, um, lack of parking around that area, um, I think that we're just going to encourage people to park on the green area beside these properties, myself, and it's already happening in other areas, which again, totally erodes the character of, of, um, this particular area. Um, we are looking at an existing bungalow, which is only about five point eight metres in height and about nineteen foot, and we're looking at replacing it with something that's twenty-six plus feet. So- So I can't agree with the officers that state on page 51 that the built form would not be substantially increased. I think it will be substantially increased, and I don't think the impact on St Heliers has been taken into account enough. I also am a bit confused on page 52 about which window is going to have obscure glass in it. I couldn't quite get to grips with which one that was. And also on page 52, the interpretation of the 45-degree angle, I couldn't quite understand whether or not it was contravening the 45-degree angle by one window, which means it is contravening it, or whether or not it isn't. So I would be grateful if those could be questions, those could be answered, whether or not what windows are going to have the obscure glass, and also, what is contravening the 45-degree angle. But at the moment, I think this is overdevelopment of this plot, and it should be refused on the grounds, I think, of bulk mass and scale, and the impact on neighbouring amenity as well, and that's how I'm feeling at the moment. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to answer those two queries, please?
The obscured glazing would be in the first-floor side windows, so they are to the bathroom areas on the first floor, small bathrooms on the first floor. With regard to the 45-degree window, if I can show a photograph. So on this, there is a, there's a window here, and then there's a window there, and this window here is, so there's a window in here into the garage, which is a non-residential space. There's a window here, and there's a window, the stepped part here, and this, the two windows to the same room. So that's why it's considered to be a secondary window, and that is, that's the window that's been referred to. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
So does it then contravene the 45-degree angle? I think you're saying it does, if I'm understanding correctly. Even though you're calling it a secondary window, you're saying that it does contravene it. Is that correct?
Can I just check the page?
I think it's worth noting that under our residential extensions SPD, secondary windows aren't usually taken into account. It would only be the prime windows to each room that the 45-degree angle applies to. So if this is on the side, looking onto a boundary fence, it would be considered a secondary window and not a, the prime window. That's the way the SPD...
Sorry, Chairman. Is that the criteria then? Because is it not the criteria as in the window, which is the biggest window from that room?
Not necessarily, no. No, because you could have a huge window that was three foot away from a close-boarded fence, and a slightly smaller window looking down the back garden. So make a bit of a nonsense of that sort of theory. It's all there. There's a residential extension SPD that's all laid down in there. Thank you. Further comment, officers?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I won't go over points that have already been made, but I would comment on the fact that what we've got between the St Heliers and the current bungalow is we've got two garages side by side, so actually, the feeling of space is quite, it's quite considerable. This proposal will actually bring that form right up to the boundary there. I think the other thing is looking at the garage that is on the, on the upside of the current bungalow. It's one car that's parking in front of it, one car and a garage, so tandem. With here moving to at least four cars, and possibly more. We've got a tight space to, for those cars to park, and if those cars go reverse backwards, they're reversed back there with all the fumes of the car, which would actually go right into the windows. I can't believe that is something that we would, we'd actually want and we would endorse. So I'm very concerned that they are trying to put too much into this space, not against the principle of the site being redeveloped. I think I've almost given up trying to protect bungalows in Waverley, although I do support my colleagues' lament for lost bungalows, but I don't think this is the right solution to that site. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Foroszewski?
Thank you, Chairman. I think what councillor Gray just said there in your ending comments was a great seminar, that this isn't the best use of this site, but where I struggle with this is, I have great empathy and tremendous sympathy what I've heard before me, but I'm struggling to find material planning considerations as to why this should not get permission to be granted, although I think in terms of the design, I think that's where the real problem for me is. I think the design of it is, I think it's already been said by councillor Townsend, it's not very inspiring, and if it was located at different angles or something else was done to it, it might make it a bit more acceptable. So whilst there's much in here that I disagree with, I can't find a planning material consideration to say I object to it. In terms of the road, again, the road bothers me, but again, in the report on 48, Surrey County highways have got no objection, so we're, you know, trying to defend ourselves against our local knowledge, against what the county said is going to be a tall order. And I don't agree with Surrey County highways on a lot of occasions, because I think they do this from a desktop study, but having said that, they have actually in the report put no objection. So I look forward to listening to other members' comments, but I struggle with this one on the grounds that there is no, no planning material considerations that would allow us to actually object to this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Chris, I think you'd like to respond to an earlier comment.
Thank you, Chairman. The point that I was going to raise is actually one that was raised a second ago, actually, the, just to reiterate, the fact that there is no objection from the County Highways Authority, and they have looked at the proposal. So, yeah, that was the main point I was going to raise. The other point was a point of clarification about the, it being within the settlement boundary. It is within the settlement boundary. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Bend?
Well, the officers just take my statement away from me. I, too, like councillor Foroszewski, don't like this, but I too have great difficulty finding grounds which would withstand scrutiny and appeal to objecting to it. Again, I think the points made in respect of the county council highway raising no objection, and the fact that it's within the settlement boundary are significant issues, which I think we, in planning terms, I think we have to take into account. As I say, I don't like it, but I can't really see grounds which could at this stage force me to object to it. Thank you.
councillor Byam, would you like to come back?
Just one small point. We didn't mention the fact that parish council have objected strongly to this application. It's been a lot of people, local people, who have objected to it. From that particular house, it's a cul-de-sac. There's 170 houses beyond that point that have to pass this property wherever they want to leave the village, or go into the centre of the village for whatever, for whatever reason. So it is a busy location, a lot of people, a lot of bigger houses, obviously down in Llaniswood, Llaniswood Close, and therefore, quite a lot of traffic, which will create the problems that have been talked about with regard to the entry and exit of those cars parking.
Thank you. So, members, the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to eight and informatives one to four in the agenda, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
Four.
And those against?
Seven.
Abstention? So that application, that permission is not granted. Could I have a proposal and second for an alternative recommendation, please? councillor Byam?
Is this application be refused?
Thank you. And the second, councillor Seaborn? councillor Byam, councillor Seaborn, perhaps you'd like to suggest some planning reasons for the refusal?
Well, we saw the overdevelopment of the site, inappropriate development on a prominent position. Inadequate amenity space for the prospective owners of this property, no front garden space, of course, and no rear space.
councillor Seaborn?
Yes, I think in addition to that, I'd put forward the reduction in visual amenity and impact on character of Barton Road. Thank you.
Anybody else? councillor Townsend?
Have we covered the impact on the neighbouring amenity as well? And bulk mass and scale of the new? And can we make any comment at all on the design?
I think we've already got inappropriate design for a prominent site.
Okay, lovely. Thank you.
Officers, any comments on those before I move to the alternative recommendation? No? No? Okay. So, members, proposed by councillor Byam and seconded by councillor Seaborn, the revised recommendation is that, for the reasons we have just discussed, which will be firmed up and put in their proper order by the officers, permission be refused. All those in favour, please?
Eight.
And against? Abstention? One. Okay, so that application is refused. We have no reason to exclude the press or the public, so I would thank you all for your attendance here tonight, and close the meeting.